Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have all the meeting order. Thank you for being with us, those in the public that are with us this evening. There's a signed sheet on the back. If you'll just list your name, we'd love to know that you were with us. We're thankful to have citizens engaging us and attending our meeting. At this time, Councilmember Fousk, can you verify that we have a full set of papers? Thank you. Council, you have the agenda before you yield the floor.
I can motion up here. I have the agenda presented.
Motion, Mr. President.
Say it.
Any discussion, council? Call it a favor?
Aye.
Vote a say. Thank you, council. First item, planning commission update. New budgets. Come forward, please, ma'am.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Mayor Elizabeth Third is development director. So we did have planning commission last Tuesday. We have four items on the agenda. The first one was a variance for traffic supply to reduce, or I'm sorry, increase from the 10% mental accent to somewhere around 40%. Unfortunately, the applicant did not show up, so we could not address additional questions from the commission, so we continue that to our September 24th meeting. Next, we had two items that were of the same property, 1877 Cove Road, right up there, the Green Grandview Cove Road. I know you guys are familiar with that area. One was for a special use permit to allow for cottage housing, and the second was for variance. The planning commission endorsed the special use permit with a two to one vote with conditions, and the variance was denied by planning commission three zero. And lastly, we had a rezoning request off of Pioneer Road, actually adjacent to our project that we were wrapping up out there. That was to rezone from C2 to R1. That whole strip over there that backs up against Prodigy on Pioneer Road is a C2 designation over there. So we have a single lot over there that needed, that wanted to be, met all of our building requirements for an R1 district. That was recommended to approve three to zero.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mayor. You're welcome.
Moving on to the next item, department presentations. Mr. Douglas, are you good with the meeting order as presented?
Yes, sir.
Chief Dolphins.
Side.
I'm glad you're.
My first. Fire department.
Oh, gosh.
Y'all people here, they're.
I don't see if he's going to work in here.
I was better my first.
I was so too. I didn't see your first one.
Woo!
Good job, he's a fire department.
We'll change the button.
All right, Chief, council has that on the dice as well as on the screen. Is yours not working?
It's plugged in.
Nice little things.
Give us just a moment, chief.
Go ahead.
All right, so today, I just want to go over how the police department operates, where we're at right now, and where we want to be in the next few years, 26, 27, 28, somewhere in there. As you can see, I like little sayings, little quotes, courage is what it takes to stand up and speak, courage is also what it takes to sit down and listen. That's something that I like to tell officers quite a bit because we do that so much. We have to listen sometimes more than we need to talk. Community overview, the Jasper Police Department provides policing services for the first mountain city. 2022 estimated population of Jasper, what I was able to find, was 4,900 citizens. Sure that's some real close. This amount is estimated to increase. Our population daytime is about 12,000. I can tell you, in the month of July, we had 660,000 cars traveling the ten and a half stretch that we have in the city limits. That's a lot. That's just month of July. So that's just north and south. That's not counting east and west traffic. Another population dynamics that will increase the number that you see is tourism population, which we have started to come, it seems like. We have a lot of downtown events, and they're pretty much throughout the year for the most part. The Jasper Police Department's mission is to enhance the quality of life in City Jasper by working cooperatively with the public and within the framework of the Constitution of the United States and the state of Georgia to enforce laws, prevent, detect crime, reserve the peace, reduce fear, and anticipate and respond to events that threaten public order and preservation of life and property. So that is on our wall when we walk in our police department. Also, our vision statement, the Jasper Police Department is a professional and responsible law enforcement agency. The department is to be innovative, progressive, and technically prepared to meet the challenges of the present and the future. We will continue to strengthen community relations, strong leadership, professionalism, and optimism. I will say, I believe, two years ago, no, two years ago, I stepped down and went through the hiring process. This is one of the things that I stressed heavily was training and becoming a professional. And I think we're getting there, we're there, and we're getting better at everything. So our core values, our professionalism, respect, integrity, dedication, and courage. Out of all those, you know, I preach on all of them, but integrity is just what it says there. The Jasper Police Department believes integrity is the character in our actions. So if we lose our integrity, none of the other things matter. These are the three or the five things that we really stress in the department. So a little humor. This is what my buddies think to do, this is what my mom thinks to do, this is what kids think to do, this is what grownups think to do, this is what I think, this is what we actually do.
True.
And it is very true, especially in daytime, that's what we do. So what do we actually do? Well, I'll show you how our organizational structure is set up first. This is how we are fully staffed at this point. I don't know if y'all can see that clearly. And that's good. That is a good setup, but it's never going to, they don't meet where we need them. The nice thing is, we are fully staffed. So what we actually do, so what you're looking at here is the crash reports, the incident reports, and the number of these reports. This is from January 1, 2024, to August 20, 2024. This is when I started making it. So these numbers have gone up a little bit. Sorry. The crashes are probably a lot higher than that because some of the crashes get worked by ESP. I know this may not seem like a lot, but if you take and look at, this crash is not bad. One crash would take about 30 minutes, one officer to get there. If this was Monday morning at 7:30, 5:15, 53 intersection, South dialing, you pull off because of a crash, injuries, we have three officers on duty, two officers going to be there for an hour to, to the road is clear, so it would be two, an hour could be two hours, three hours, four hours, whatever it takes, leaves us one officer on the street to take calls. Not to say we would have backup from the county as well, but if they're busy, that's where, that's where we'd be at. So if you look at the incident reports, they're a little higher. They should be, I guess you could say, but crash reports, that's going to be, they will probably end up being more than the incident reports just because we have a lot of traffic, obviously. 660,000 cars, we should. So in an incident report, it's about the same thing. To just kind of put it in perspective, the message is you, I ask for the officers to try to go into, not in the same car, but at least show up, two officers there. It don't always happen, but if that's the case, it might not happen, they might be on that injury, and you might have one officer who wants to make the call. Part of the, part of the profession, yeah, part and part of it is, you know, we get the numbers up, and you still can end up in that same place, but this is where we're at right now. Now, 2023 overall numbers, I have to give you to just put in perspective where we're Total number of incident reports for 2023 was 795 incident reports and 480 crash reports, and that was total for 2023. You can see where we're at in the month of, just starting September. So we're probably going to go over. So what do we actually do, part two? So CID, that was Uniform Control, this is CID. 65% of the cases that they work are property crimes, 25% of the cases are person-on-person, and you had the 10%, which are children crimes, exploitation, stuff like that. We have two investigators right now, and they both probably have about 50 to 60 active cases that they're working on each. They have triple digits when it comes to overall active cases that they can work with only two of them, so they have to prioritize what they're working. Even though we have 65% of that as property, that 10% outweighs that 65% when it comes to the type of problem that we're dealing with more detail, you could work with GBI, D-Box, and all other kinds of other agencies and alphabet agencies. 2024 so far, they've 50 arrest warrants and 14 search warrants they have. Just both of them have done, but don't include UPD officers. Also, our CID does our internal affairs, so it actually takes a bit away. If we, for our new hires, they do background checks, if something happens with our personnel, they do the internal fair investigation as well. So this is where hopefully in the next couple of years we like to be. So things that have changed is you have four officers on day shift, four officers on night shift, on each rotation. Add another investigator, put it at three investigators, and then an evidence custodian, which would be a civilian position, not a civilian position. Some of the things we do, one of my favorite pictures up there is crying, is training. We have utilized our courtroom for training quite a bit, and it has been a huge help. We have done CPR classes, roll call training, fire department has utilized it, they were a lock too, which I think goes with their training. We're about to hold a supervision class in November there, which is going to be multi-agencies. Other agencies have utilized it for training with Sandy Springs and Roswell. We do all our government and district classes. Everything's done in-house, which is, is saving us a lot. So we believe in training. We have went from, two years ago, the mandatory training by the state was 20 hours, that was mandatory for the department. Now we're going for the department, 24 hours. Everybody has met that so far, and it's actually gotten to more than 40. Community involvement, I think we have done more than we ever have. We have reading across America, that's the country kids, we always go there twice a year usually, other kids playing the pro car, National Night Out. We do have the gravity derby race coming up, little plug there, October 12th. Harmony School is career day, coffee with the cop, and the other two pictures are just where one was flying there at the Derby last year and our National Night Out last year. So we've come a long way in 2005. We've implemented the take on hiring and retention incentives of very technology department. We have structured within the department, which is wonderful. We're looking on changing the culture, we are changing the culture, I will say that. That is probably one of the hardest things, anybody's been through that, it was very hard to do. Getting the buy-in is probably the hard part, but we're, we're there, we're working really good with that. I would look forward to many more years, and this is not a marathon, or it is a marathon, it's not a sprint, so. And it's up there, there will be bumps, there will be walls, there will be obstacles, but we'll get through it. And I do want to say, with the information given today, I do not want this to be spun off like, you know, increased, skies falling, yes, we have more people coming in, so crime will increase, it's just nature at least. There's more opportunity with more people. You can't stop it, you can kind of slow it down, but you're not going to stop it. I just don't want it to be, you know, taken the wrong way that we have a lot of crime. We don't have, we do have crime, every place does. There's things blown out, you know, not blown out of proportion that has increased, you know, groceries, lumber, vehicle prices, blood pressure, and stuff like that. So I think we're good. I wouldn't say we're going to be violent crimes, but yeah, the crime is going, it will change. And we can just hope to be there and do what we say we're going to be able to do, protect and serve. So we will be proactive. Do y'all have any questions?
Before we open up for questions, council and the public that's present, the Public Safety Committee is comprised of councilmember Snag, councilmember Hannah. I appreciate their work, all of diligence and working on their committee well. Committee or council, anything?
You know, I just want to plug, the Derby race is coming up, October 12th. It's a great time, really going to challenge everyone to put a car in, attend, and then just support our guys and our community.
National Night Out is September 28th. So please bring your kids and enjoy the festivities. And as another one, a leader is one who knows why, knows the why, goes, or knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way, Tom Mashburn. So it's very true. Perfect. Put it all in there for all the officers. Definitely all my officers are paid in some form or fashion.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, thank you for your leadership, because that has, I think anybody that saw it before you took over and where we are now is a huge step in the right direction, so we do appreciate.
Wish I had audio.
Chief. Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Next up on the agenda, Fire Department, Chief Share. Before Chief Share starts presenting, as I mentioned earlier with the Police Department, the same committee members on Public Safety represent the Fire Department here.
It's all work until Chief Dolphins touches it. I'm just giving you more time to talk. Hopefully it works. Hopefully it works, it says. This is your 90-day plan. 90-day plan, not 30. 30. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate y'all providing the opportunity to see this, about my favorite thing, seeing the Fire Department and keeping the public safe. Similar to Chief Dolphins, we were challenged, I remember during my interview process, I was challenged by then Mayor Pro Tim, now Mayor Radfield too, that the goal was to professionalize and grow the department. I think that was professionalism and growth is what I remember. We've been hardworking at that since I've been here two and a half years ago, so we're moving in the right direction. I'm going to try and keep this as brief as possible, because I like to talk, but I'll do my best, so. Without further ado, our current organizational chart, we've got the Fire Chief, the Assistant Chief, and then you'll notice on the outside, we've got a Fire Marshal with the rank of captain, then we've got a Training Officer who is captain as well. In between them are our three lieutenants, who are our shift supervisors. They have a sergeant prepared with them and three firefighters, that puts us at five per shift. And I'll, I'll talk about that more as we go along. The part of having two officers per shift is if one of them's off, the other one's there, we've always got an officer to lead and supervise the personnel and make the decisions when anybody is present. At the same time, we come in for Chief, Assistant Chief, any structural fires, any significant calls, we're going to be there and show up across the time of day or whatever it is, whether it's middle of light Christmas, or New Year's, or Thanksgiving, we'll show up every time. All right, services delivered, I'm going to go over these broadly, and then we'll break down and get into a little bit. We've got three main divisions, we've got operations, and then we have got community risk reduction training. Operations consist of fire suppression, obviously, structural, vehicular, vault fire, all three types. EMS, that would become a very large component, and that comprises probably the majority of our calls now, probably does. I don't have the exact percentage there. And then rescue, a lot of people don't realize that vehicle extrication falls under rescue, that falls under technical rescue. It is probably the discipline we do the most in the technical rescue field, so a lot of our personnel don't really associate with tech rescue, they look at the major disciplines like confined space, road, structural collapse, trench, things of that nature. And we also respond to hazardous conditions, whether it can be a wires down or a hazmat situation. Operations also handles annual maintenance, so they're taking care of your hydrant inspections, flow testing, apparatus maintenance. Now, some of that goes out to professional services if it needs to, such as pump testing and ladder testing. That happens by a third party, and that's something that we do to make sure everything is operational, they're licensed and certified before those tests. Community risk reduction, that's going to be your Fire Marshal. He's handling inspections, plan review, investigation, fire safety education, there's a lot of things that go under community risk reduction that are often responsible for. Now, operations obviously helps out with some of those things, such as fire safety education events, things like that, but as far as inspections, plan review, investigations, that's all on him, he's limited as licensed and certified to do those things. Training, like I said, we've got a captain over training. He handles probably one of the most important things that people don't think about, but that's state fire and EMS compliance. We are governed by Georgia Firefighters Association Training on the fire side, and the Department of Public Health on the EMS side. Both of those have oversight over our department, our operations. We have the whole licenses through both, both individually and at the department level. And his philosophy is to make sure everybody gets their training hours and takes care of that, makes it minimums. And then continuing education in both disciplines as well as creative. All right, we'll hold down operations a little bit, and all the pictures you'll see in here are from Jasper, incidents we responded to. Fire suppression, obviously, we talked about that version of medical services. Talk a little bit more about the technical rescue discipline, vehicle extrication we mentioned, which we're very proficient at. Rope rescue, we've got trained personnel every shift now, and we can perform rope rescue. We've actually performed successful rope rescue over this year. Confined space rescue, that is something we have certified personnel in, but we're still training and growing in that area. We've got some equipment there, but we're having to grow equipment. So we're working on the training side there and the equipment side. Unfortunately, technical rescue, material equipment involved in them are expensive, and they don't get used a lot, unfortunately. It's just the nature of it, unfortunately, there. But we're working on that, and then we're also working towards capabilities in trench rescue, structural collapse, and swift water. Now, you may look at me and say, why is swift water, I don't have a body of water, but the reality is, if we have settled down for, sometimes our creeks and streams can become swift water, and somebody could potentially end up in one of them. So we've got to be prepared to respond to that. Structural collapse, we kind of rate these as well based on what we thought would be the need. Right now, rope rescue isn't at the top of the list, confined space, which we're working on, it would be called by trains and structural collapse and swift water. But we are actively working on that list, having people trained, acquiring equipment, so that way we're able to respond and mitigate anything that may happen. Reality for us is, where we're located, we have resources that we've called mutual aid for technical rescue, but the reality is, the time it takes for them to get to us is just not settled. If you're looking, probably the closest technical rescuing team we can get in, probably an hour, to be honest, maybe a little bit sooner. So we need to be proficient in this, and that's what we're working towards, we've identified the need, and we're working to make sure we're prepared to respond to that need. Community risk reduction, again, we talked about this briefly. Inspections, my target goal, what I challenge a Fire Marshal with, is being able to do annual inspections for all of our commercial agencies every year. That's a tall order for him because we've got 800-plus commercial agencies, it's not just your commercial businesses, it is your churches, your government buildings, anything that's public access, needs annual inspection. And the important reason that's targeted is that it's one ISO, but at the other side of it, we want to make sure all our buildings are safe for the public too. We want to make sure that suppression system in that building functions like it should. Your restaurants you go in, the hood system, make sure the extinguishers are aligned, they are, make sure the tanks are not blocked, things of that nature. So it's a public safety thing, and it's also nice, it means two things. Planery, that's something he does in conjunction with planning zoning, he looks at the fire safety features, site plans, as well as actual building construction, making sure everything meets compliance, meets our adopted ordinances, as well as ordinances that we put in place here in the city as well. Investigations, that's required by Title 25, which is the section of the CGA that covers fire departments and their formation and regulation. So he's required to investigate every fire. And then fire safety education, of course. Fire safety education is something, we're one of the unique organizations, I guess we are actively trying to put ourselves out of business. If it's up to us, everybody to be so safe that there'll never be a fire no good up there, but, you know, we can try our best, but that's not going to happen, so we try to educate as much as we can. Some of the things that we're working towards are CPR classes for the public, myself, the Assistant Chief, and three others going to get our CPR instructor certification Monday, in fact, that way we have more people that can offer these services, both for our city employees, hopefully to the public in the future as well. And then we also have to teach fire technical classes, a lot of your apartment complexes and things like that, they may require, or they may ask for it, civic organization may ask for, so we're moving in that direction to provide higher level service on community risk protection side as well, fire safety education. Youth Fire Center Intervention is a new program we're about to roll out with as well. Both the Assistant Chief and Fire Marshal are certified on this, and what this program does is it sets forth a plan of action if we identify at-risk youth that may be prone to youth fire center, and it allows us to help them before we see fire center, things like that. It partners with law enforcement as well as Department of Defense as well. And it's supposed to be proactive, not punitive, so we're looking to stop behavior before it starts there. All right, training. Now, you notice the picture I've got, I've got skills-based training and physical training. We are working very hard to improve our skill level in a lot of areas above minimums, which is, right now, we're already above the minimum where we're at, but we're looking at a lot of skill-based training as far as our technical rescue disciplines and some other disciplines as well, but the physical aspect of it, you can have all the knowledge in the world, if you can't physically put it to use, that's a problem. So our personnel, a lot of them work out, you see in their gear, they'll work out on shift, off shift, maintain physical fitness, that's important for us. And you may say, well, why are they using the gear? Well, you, it's kind of a different kind of fitness almost. When you wear the air pack, it restricts your breathing to a certain extent, you can only breathe as fast, the regulator will allow you to, and working out in it allows you to become accustomed to it and be more physically fit in it, dexterity, and all that. As far as the compliance aspect of it, like I mentioned earlier, we're responsible for ensuring compliance with Georgia Firefighters Association Training, as well as Department of Public Health, they work with us regularly, making sure we maintain open compliance areas we need. And also, I would mention that our target goal right now is 240 hours per person training per year. I'm not going to say everybody gets that all the time, probably the person that doesn't get it the most, I would say is probably me, because I'm not always able to go off just to train classes regularly. We send our personnel to GIBTI, we also send them to Haybury County for training, and we do a lot in-house training. Some of the stuff, we don't have facilities for, but we have. All right, personnel, where we're at right now, we've got some organizational chart earlier. Right now, we're staffing three shifts, the five full-time personnel in each shift, and we have nine part-time personnel. The nine part-time personnel are divided up three per shift. They help us augment, we try and work a part-time person to have. They help us augment, we try and work a part-time person to have that sixth person, as we mentioned, we have five. And we're trying to get to six per shift. They also augment when somebody's off. That way we can have them in as well to make sure we maintain our level of staffing, the command and staff positions I mentioned before, our chief assistant, our chief fire marshal, and training captain. Now, our current response model, we're staffing five per shift, so that allows for two in-service apparatus. Unlike law enforcement, I've got to put at least two people on that apparatus to work together. So with five, I can put three on engine and two on rescue. The rescue crew, they will cross-staff either a second engine or a ladder truck, depending on what the nature of the call. ISO wants us to put at least two fire engines and one ladder truck on the scene of a heavy structure fire, whether it's residential or commercial. That's something they ask us for. And they grade us against, that's also just operational best practices based on the tasks that have to be completed at the structure fires. You've got one engine that's showing up and a ladder truck that one may be performing search, the other one may be performing, you know, initial fire attack. And that other engine may be handling the worst block operations. There's a lot of moving pieces. NFPA 1710, which sets for staffing models, says for, I think it's a two-story house without a basement, they're looking for 17 personnel on the scene. So with automatic aid and with our department, we're pretty close to meeting that, we're getting very close. So that's the goal, that's what we're working towards. All right, let's get into the statistics a little bit. Chief Dawkins has some good statistics. I don't know if you can see that map real well. That's called our heat map and that comes from our RMS program. And you can see where our current station is with the red dot on the top and the red dot on the bottom is where our next station is supposed to be, we're working towards. You can also see there's green where we have a lot of calls and then the darker the color, we go to yellow or red based on call density. Three highest call density locations are going to be our nursing home and our two assisted living facilities. Beyond that, we have a pretty healthy spread out location of calls. And you can see how that station on the south is going to help us with response times down there. A little bit of statistics that I go with it. Last year, we responded 2,224 incidents. Now, incident is a, but not a one's call for service, basically. And today, JFD has responded to 1,767 incidents in 2020, that's to date. The projection, if we keep up that rate, would be 2,600 calls in a year, so 2,600 incidents. Now, that may change. County Fire has some issues with Hobson and Camp Road as far as those territories go. So we may not have that same call line, I'm not very secure there, we'll see how that trends in the next month or so. Another big thing for us and the reason we're trying to get to six personnel with three, get with three in-service apparatus with two 102s, is we have overlapping incidents. Over the course of the past year, we've had 347 instances of overlapping incidents with, and that's a typo on my part, I apologize, I should say, two or more incidents at a time. So keep in mind, we have two incidents at a time, we've got two in-service units, so we're using them both. And then that, that effect is a total of 773 calls or incidents. Of the 347, 57 of those represented three or more incidents at one time. 57 of those instances represented, 11 of those represented four or more incidents at one time as well. And then 11 of those instances was, one was five, one was seven, and one was nine. So now the seven and nine, that's going to be during storms, floods, down, power lines, stuff like that. But that's just kind of work we're training and helping to apply to that. I would like to mention that I'm very proud that we've only not responded to two incidents out of all those. We were able to have them come and make it there through command staffing, with people stepping up and responding. But of those two, it was not a, nobody responded. It was, there was another call of higher acuity. In one case, we helped the county out with a wrecked car, it's not ruined by 15, and they picked up a mid-call in Southwood. So helping each other out like that, so only two calls that we didn't ask for, our apparatus to, but the calls were handled and were responded to. All right, transitioning to the second station we're working on. We're going to end up transitioning from an engine or rescue to two engines and a ladder truck in service. One staff, engine at each station, and then a ladder truck staff at each station one. Second response areas, of course, that second station will cover all with the AW Lawson and all the way south to the bottom of the city limits. And we've had, coincidentally, we've had three vehicle accidents south of 108 while we were working at that site location. Our average lost out to two minutes compared to, I'd say, an average of eight to 10 coming from here. Significant reduction. And the sooner we can get there, the better, the sooner we start mitigating this. All right, our goal is for 2025 beyond, two staffed engines, some operations side, a ladder all the times. Transition rescue one into a battalion chief vehicle, technical rescue equipment on it. Some things we've been trying to mitigate or have any with it. But we're kind of maxed out of our compartment space, so we're looking at possibly putting down, instead of having those rescue truck, supervisor vehicle, put all the technical rescue on. So obviously, if there's a technical rescue incident, supervisor is going to be there to help mitigate that. Also, our goal is to open the second station in Q1 of 2025. That's one of my goals to achieve. And then we're going to continue to work on our technical rescue capabilities, as I mentioned before. As far as community risk reduction, we're trying to increase our inspection capabilities, we mentioned earlier. We're going to continue to work on public safety education. We don't turn down any requests for events. Somebody calls and wants us there, we get, especially with public safety education. Downtown lives, those are more of standby events, but we do touch trails, we do fire safety education. Probably one of my favorite events is Tommy Fest coming up, I like that one, there's a lot of people, a lot of kids, and all the rest of creative houses. So we're there, we'll do public safety day, that's another good one as well, bring family out to come and see, see all the different public safety entities and what particular ones are. Training goes, we're going to continue to offer in-house courses and citizen staff training as possible. Continue to increase our level of service. That's the whole goal is, you know, we've got a lot of people and they're moving to our area, a lot of people that have already been here. And the expectation is, is high, so I'll sort of clear what the department can deliver and we're going to make sure we meet those expectations every day. Regardless of what it is, we'll rise and challenge it wherever it comes. And the last thing under training would be secure training facility location. We've already started talks with that city leadership and been working in the positive direction there. That way we have the local area to kind of work and expand our training capabilities. Any comments? And just for fire departments, continue to grow to meet the services that are ready and the expectations of today and the future. Through physical education, we're over this, what we're doing every day. And that's the end of my presentation. Y'all have any questions for me?
Thank you, Chief, Councilman.
Again, I just want to thank you for your service because we have continued to move forward with it and we appreciate your hard work with it.
We appreciate y'all's support, we can't do it without you, we all have supported us in every step of the way.
Thanks, sir. Next item on the agenda, we have admin finance, Mr. Douglas. The committee members for admin finance are Councilmember Steve, Councilmember Lou.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
So no PowerPoint. I think, I think you all are pretty much aware. And I appreciate y'all aligning the chief and chief to present. Monday evening, there'll be a couple other department heads presenting to y'all. The idea, and I'll get into kind of the wide balancing business, you know, we're going to be talking about military budget, et cetera. And I think it's important to continue to update you all on these specific departments because sometimes we can take for granted that we see these individuals, but I used the example before, between a fire chief or a police chief, you could see them out at a restaurant and they're laughing, having a good time, and then you have an incident and immediately, there's a response. And so the professionals that we have on the staff that y'all continue to fund is paramount success for this community. So it was strategic to allow them to, to talk to y'all, it was strategic to allow Mr. Mary and the utility director, Andrew, to be able to talk with y'all Monday to kind of continue. Hours from administration, finance, HR, we do feel as though that from a support perspective, we do dabble in operations. Obviously, Kim is very strong in operations, but we do feel as though that we try to support these other departments. So the reason we do not feel as though we want to give a PowerPoint is because most of the time, we want to operate as support for y'all as the elected body. We want to support the departments that are out in the field doing the work. From making sure that they have the funding, that they have the resources necessary, that we're communicating to you all as a city management team to let y'all know where they stand. That way it allows them to continue to do their job without any impediments of trying to sell themselves, so to speak. So I think it's important for us to let you all know that we do take our job seriously administratively, provide them the support they need as best we can because we do not want them sitting at a desk doing some of this task that we may be doing. We want them out there operating. We're still small enough as an organization that you do have chief share that's pretty much on every call because that is his managing philosophy. And I think it is aligned with the culture that we are continuing to foster here. So with that, clearly, we're going to have, you know, finance director talking a little bit about a topic that's near and dear to our heart. You'll hear later on from the committee as well as, you know, Kim, myself, Lori, with respect to some insurance and other administrative stuff. So we didn't want to just compound y'all with an initial PowerPoint. And quite frankly, because we're helping support them, we didn't have time to do the PowerPoint. So there you go. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is a request for a proposal for fire station number 14. Chief Share, if you'll come forward, sir. I do have one question for you from your presentation. Chief Dawkins touched on his staffing levels. Can you touch base on your staffing levels?
All of our allocated positions aren't built for 100% staff.
Thank you, sir.
So fire station 14, our second station, I mentioned a little bit in the presentation earlier. The intent was to have an RFP for you tonight to look at, go over, and hopefully approve Monday. But we had to pull that RFP back, we ran some septic issues that we're having to address. Our goal is to ensure we do this right the first time and not just build something and, oh, we'll fix it later. That's not the city's philosophy, that's not our philosophy. So we're going to write it first time. So I intend to have this before you in a month's time with this issue worked out. Something that popped up, we had originally been told that everything was good with the septic system, but we turned it. Happened to do a little further investigation over on the side, that wasn't the case. So we're addressing it and we're moving forward. The RFP is finished, which I believe you should probably see in your packets. The big difference is where we position the building, based on where the septic grades go. So if we shift the building to the left or the right, the attaching portion, what we're calling the buttering, where it attaches the two-way building to the existing structure, it changes the dimensions, therefore the RFP has changed. So we're waiting until we get that out of our doubt, working with DPH contractors to make sure we get it right the first time. So we don't build a nice fire station and turn around and have to fix septic issues right now. That's where we're at. If I have any questions, for the overall project goals or timelines?
Council, with that information, I think this is not advancing to the council meeting. It will be pending until chief brings it back before. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Chief. Next item on the agenda, advertisement for tax bill which? Ms. Lindsay Williams, come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm not sure if this is my favorite subject, Mr. Douglas, but it's one that we have to address. So you're out on like you need. So around mid-August, the tax commissioner's office provided us with our tax digest. Granted, they gave the tax digest from Higgins County Census Office to appraise the property affected in the city, which they appraised commercial and residential. And what happens if a property value increases due to inflation or newer, if they're new or improved properties, then typically the tax digest reflects an increase. If the city is scheduled to receive additional property tax links due to an increase in the overall tax digest, then a determination has to be made as to whether or not the millage rate is to be rolled back, kept the same, or increased. If the millage rate is not rolled back, then the increased revenue is considered a tax increase requiring that three public hearings be held and a tax increase effort component be posted. Whatever rate is advertised is the most can be considered at the time the millage rate is adopted. However, through the process of the three public hearings, information can be gathered and conveyed for a determination of what rate would be needed in order to balance the budget. During the final consideration, an adoption of the millage rate, the adoption rate can be less than what is advertised, but it cannot be more. That's important. It can be less, but it cannot be more. So currently, staff has received and reviewed the tax digest and we are recommending advertising a one and a half mil increase over the 2023 millage rate, which was 5.221, and then increase it to 6.721. And like I said before, we can advertise the one and a half mil rate increase, but it's not mean that it has to be adopted. It will be presented, we'll do our three public hearings, it'll be presented to council at the October meeting for adoption.
And Mr. Mayor, Council, I told Lindsay, she was going to lead off. Y'all, with hearing just a moment, I'd like to just kind of add a little bit. You may recall that in 2020, we had brought to you all kind of a similar type thing. Because some jurisdictions, staff is directed to essentially advertise for a millage to balance the budget. Because we're in the process now of trying to get all the department's requests, get the budget handled. So then in October, November, we can kind of come before y'all have committee level and then a public hearing to then present the budget. So it can seem a little backwards that we're having to get a millage rate, but based upon the obligatory, how do you assess the budget, without knowing what the taxing rate's going to be for 2025. So the idea is, we have a managing philosophy here of asking to get y'all's buy-in on what we want to advertise. And trusting that, based upon some preliminary numbers that we've seen from the departments and some of the needs, Lindsay and our recommendation of the 1.5 is based upon essentially status quo. So that's not anything elaborate, that's not anything to address in the presentation from here in terms of future wants or needs. Essentially, status quo. Part of what we did in 2020 was we advertised for two mil. I think at the time, the learning curve was to try to ensure that you cannot adopt a millage rate that is beyond that which you advertise. You can certainly adopt one that is less as you continue to refine what your needs are. And I think it's important that we are going to try to expedite the department heads meeting when we go on the committee level to kind of get some insight into some of those needs. To then, by the time that the schedule works October 7th for the final adoption of millage rate, you can then have the information that you need to then fully determine if you want to do a rollback, a, a, keep the millage the same. One mil, half a mil, one and a half, two. So I do want to make sure that the public knows as well that it's important as a fiduciary for the city that we provide this information to you all because the police department, as an example. In 2024, we collected less than $2 million in added lawn, the property tax, personal tax, less than $2 million. The police department was around $2.2 million to run that budget. That is still less than what perhaps other markets may dictate in terms of what a police department. So when you look at in terms of the overall general fund, which is general government services, you're looking at about less than 25% of your funding source coming from property tax. And you have two departments, very, very fine departments that I'm a strong advocate for, over 50% of your general fund budget. So I wanted to illustrate that point, that as we continue on this journey of looking at what we need to set the millage rate to help continue to provide these services, that I think that we've all seen firsthand how beneficial they are for the whole community. So with that, I'll just kind of let, you know, ask any questions. We are not necessarily seeking direction, Mr. Mayor, on what to set it. We do anticipate on having this Monday evening as an agenda item because that would then allow us to advertise appropriately for then the necessary hearings if we so chose to go that way.
Thank you, sir. So does anybody have to add? Council, any questions? Any additional information needed from council?
Absolutely, I'd like to, I have a question for Mr. Douglas.
Is it?
So in 2020, when we advertised that we were, that we may need to increase... So in 2020, when we advertised that we were, that we may need to increase our rate that year, what did we ultimately do? Do you mind remembering?
At that point, we had scaled it down to a 1-mill increase.
Okay. That's what I recall. So us advertising doesn't make us incorrigible or inept or unconscionable or horrible things like that? We're actually following what the law says we should do if we anticipate that we may have to increase the taxes?
As a best practice with your staff, you may recall the amended budget in July, we already had recognized that in terms of some other revenue sources, so 75% of these other revenue sources that we essentially have no real control over. Yes, sir, we do recognize that it is responsible for us to do this.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions or discussion, Counsel? This will be advanced to the regular council meeting, it will not be a consistent agenda item. Thanks, Mick. Next item on the agenda, City Manager's Office update. Mr. Douglas, you have a few items on there, I'll go ahead and let you go through all of those.
Yes, sir, thank you, Rob. And I'll have Ms. Lori and Kim kind of help out, fill in the gaps. And I think we've, at the committee level, done a pretty good job with council members learning and stating, discussing the insurance rule. I don't know if it's their preference to kind of tee it off or piggyback off of staff comments. It's clear to y'all, but I'm comfortable just moving forward. We did not include anything in your packets because we did feel as though that we need to verbalize this first because the complexities of what you're going to get in your packet for Monday evening can be confusing. And so it's just unless you're dealing with this on a regular basis, it can be confusing because there's a lot of numbers. And so what we wanted to do is keep it simple in terms of, we have an existing insurance, health insurance plan that we are part of the joint municipal associations pool. We have Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield as our medical insurance provider. And there was a rate increase of nearly 9%, 8.9%. That was the initial renewal rate. That triggered us to work with our broker, to have them go out onto the market to see if there would be another provider that would fit on our services. Because of our size, we are not necessarily in a competitive market necessarily of having all the information that these companies want and the actuaries to see what kind of risk we are. So we only had one bidder essentially, which was Cigna, and they came in at a rate less than what our current is. And so we were excited, and then we asked them if they would consider doing a rate cap in year two. The experience that I've had since 2007 is that the GMA pool has about 10,000 participants. With us being less than 100, it does benefit us to be in this very large pool in terms of, we've had a historical average of probably 3% or less of a premium rate increase, I think 00357, because the most recent renewal, they pared down from 8.9 to 6.9, but I say 7%. Lindsay says 6.9, I say 7. So nonetheless, I have, we have to look at it from the perspective of, we've got 7%, we've got a historical average of about 3%, we've got Cigna, that if we bundle all the services, medical dental vision will give us a 2% discount. Now, that seems fantastic. Because of our size, we are unsure if all of the disruption, meaning that if we were to change providers, there's not a disruption report that we can then go out and say, well, your doctor is going to be covered, we don't know if they take Cigna. We do know that about 98% are within some provider that's in the city network. So we do know that if we were to go with Cigna, that 98% of our employee population is within one or two providers. We just don't know, they may have to change primary, the specialist, if they're continuing treatment, what continuing care will look like. I believe Ms. Lori and I, she can piggyback on when I show up, if need be, or the committee, but staff's recommendation is to stick with what we've got. And even though the 6.9% increase can seem a little weird while you're asking for that, it's because our year-two rate cap guarantee is 15% from Cigna. Now, the reason we were asking that is we were respectfully saying, if we get out of this pool and we get into the open market, what is our exposure in year two? It's great to have a discount, but we're essentially saying that in year two, we could have exposure of 13%. We know that we already have a five-year average of about 3%. So even with our claims loss ratio being a little higher for this calendar fiscal year, we feel comfortable that we may hit our 3% average in year two, or 2026. Or if we double that up, that would be 6% increase coupled with a 7% this year, we're at 13%, which is in effect the exact same we would be in 2026 with the rate cap. Now, clearly from a business model perspective, you could say, well, if you have a great year, maybe the insurance provider will keep you at about, you know, 8%, 10%. Absolutely, they may. I just have about 19 years of experience to the contrary. That's not being disparaging, that is fact. Every single year that I've been part of the management team in another jurisdiction, we were constantly going out to the market just because we would get 20, 30-plus percent increases. So I feel comfortable at the staff level recommending that the city will try to absorb this 7% increase for our team, just to demonstrate that, hey, we hear you, we appreciate you. And I think the overall preliminary budget implications and numbers are such that it would allow for that.
And this has been discussed by the administrative committee and agrees with, will agree with the recommendation that comes up. Thank you, sir. Nick Dunn.
So last month, I had ambitions of doing, presenting you all with some information. Candidly, I just was not able to get it, not even want to rush it, since, as you all are aware, we do have some elements of this already in ordinance. It's just a matter of trying to clean up the language, so I would recommend no action to be put forward at this time.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, Doug.
So we did meet, the team and I, with some, you know, I was committed to some of our downtown alcohol license holders, kind of have a listening session, talk about some things. And we've got some ideas that we would like to, you know, work with the administration committee for the remainder of this year that we think would enhance and streamline some of the experiences that our partners in downtown have. And one of the things that, you know, it didn't really get brought up because I wanted to ask what modifications to the actual alcohol ordinance was desired, and there was none. There were some other things relating to events, special events, alcohol catering, et cetera, that we'll be presenting to you all. So just wanted, I think, Mr. Siphon, the continuous, if you will, the extension more touring begins, I think, Monday, so I just wanted to give y'all an update that staff is not recommending to do any further extensions of it, just to allow it to, I guess, expire.
So we feel like we've analyzed what we currently are doing to a point where we feel that it's satisfactory in your...
Yes, and part of the reasoning for the extension the first time is I had not had an opportunity to listen to the persons, the businesses. And although I have not spoken with every single one, I felt as though the sample size was sufficient for us to then conclude that we do not feel as though there's any change warranted this time.
Other than the core people that we're talking about, was there any feedback, positive or negative, from other organizations that had not expressed any interest in making any changes or which to me would imply that they're satisfied with it as well? Was there?
I've not received any, sir.
Thanks.
Next up. Ms. Gold, you're on the list.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So Mr. Douglas will be talking to y'all about a specific event shortly, but this is going to topic that has been discussed quite a bit in the Parks Committee recently. And so events, I just wanted to give you a very broad overview of how the city handles events now, and that would be special events, things like art walk, downtown live, any kind of parade, road races. This also includes events that are at our parks, and Leon Park is an extremely popular park this coming weekend. There is the farm days.
Equipment.
Yes, thank you. The Georgia Antique Club that has the Days of Yesteryear, I believe is what it is called, where they will have all the tractors and all of the cool equipment set up. All of these individuals and organizations fill out one of the city's special events request forms. And it is a form that collects information about who you are, what are you wanting to do, when are you wanting to do it, what park or what area are you looking to do something within, times. You kind of fill out all the information. Organizations will then provide their liability insurance information, and then they sign the waiver understanding the acceptance of liability. That then goes to our reviewing departments. So that goes to the Fire Department, the Police Department, and our Public Works Department because those are the three departments that are affected by events, whether it be a road closure, or needing to have an officer somewhere, or trash collection, or whatever that event may entail that requires city services from. They are given an opportunity to review. Sometimes they come back with additional questions, which then are answered and sent back out for review. And sometimes it's just a comment, hey, Leon Park, make sure you leave the entrance off of Burton Street open so that an engine can get through there in case there is an emergency. That's a very common comment, just to make sure that area has been left for our public safety groups to be able to get to and tend to someone if they need be.
And so, Mr. Mayor, part of the reason why staff wanted to just put this under City Manager's Office to kind of bring to y'all is, I think I've alluded to it in the past, during my first tenure, y'all may have heard me talk about signature events. And I think what I'd like to do is continue, or want to reinstitute that trend of these signature type events, not to take anything away from the process that Ms. Goldner has already particular. I think that's wonderful, legal, and Kim have done a phenomenal job, and I do not want to usurp any of that. What I'd like to do is bring back the idea of championing and getting excited, these signature type events, to come before you all as the elected legislative body and to be able to present their idea and/or, you know, yes, we're continuing to do this event that we've been doing for X hundred years. I think that's a good practice to just continue to remind anyone who views our meetings, who reads our meetings, who talks about it, who reads about it, it's just a continuation of celebrating and championing these events, all the while making sure the clarity that what you all hear and the consistency of what staff is in processing is coalesced. So, you know, part of what's coming up that I didn't want to specifically bring up is the, I think, the, last year, there was a last moment where the Halloween trick-or-treating on Main Street, there had been some, maybe it was not going to happen, well, then it was going to happen. And so when staff approached me about this upcoming, my recommendation is that even though there are perhaps things that we want to continue to do, I was not necessarily going to move forward with doing that this year. Unless there was something that was given, and this is again to think about, we've got time, and that's all we're bringing out, I'm not sure it was championing that particular initiative. And going back to some of the other signature events or other events that we have for the remainder of this year, that was one that I do think is going to be happening in neighborhoods and in other areas of the city that doesn't necessarily require city services of blocking off and doing these other things. So that was an example of, in the past, at least I'm accustomed, that there would have been a request or been a presentation provided to you all of wanting to do this, who's going to have ownership, if you will. But I do think it's important for these events to continue to be successful and sustainable to have the ownership in. We do have groups that have ownership, but they themselves know that they may be spread thin. So I'm not trying to eliminate events, I'm just trying to make sure that we're all celebrating them and keep on the same page. I was reminded that the Zombie Fest is one of Chief Share's favorite events, and it is obviously one of those self-contained down at Lee Newton that doesn't necessarily require closings and whatnot. And I just think that we wanted to provoke the thoughts from this body so that if you wanted to give staff, you know, a different direction and you think about it, just wanted to put it out there. That in 2025, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I would like to reinstitute some of these things to celebrate all the wonderful things we did 12 months after here.
Ms. Gold, you think that out?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any questions I can ask, Counsel?
Of course.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So Brandon, been on this journey for a while, and despite what y'all may hear, I can only speak for myself, I think there, from my perspective, when we changed things, tried to steer things away from council making some decisions, it was a matter of control. I think a lot of things in a past era came before us because council, not necessarily council, but maybe executives on the council wanting control. And so I think one of the things that we focused on was getting that, giving that control to staff. And so I think now, it's actually exciting to be in a position where we have a perspective where that may not necessarily have been in the best interest of our city, and we're just going to, I'm always going to, and you know what I'm going to say, we want to do whatever the best practice is for this situation. And this is a very, much more complicated situation than we can talk about really in a work session because some of the things that have happened with the way we're doing things. So all that to say, I support that, what your suggestion, and I think we're in a position now where we want to work together with staff. And I see that coming with some of our other initiatives, where these events will continue to prosper and there'll be more of them, it's going to take more organization. And it certainly helps when you have somebody that is willing to come before council and be excited about what they're presenting and us not to either drive it or suppress it. And so I fully support it.
Any other comments or questions, Counsel? Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is an executive session, Counsel. You have the floor.
A commotion, we go into the executive session.
Second. Motion and second in discussion, Counsel. Call him, David.
Aye.
Post-sent. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we are now here in the executive session.